We're now going to hear from the Community Budget Review Committee. Carol, you want to introduce yourself?
I do, and first I will thank you CBRC for waiting for this late hour for your introduction. But the Community Budget Review Committee actually convenes every year. I'm going to ask the co-chairs Tom Fuller and Rita Moore to come on up to present the report on behalf of the committee. But they are with us through the entire budgeting process and their meeting with various staff, looking deeply at what the things that are being proposed in the budget, evaluating, and then giving us commentary on what's in the proposed budget. They can also take on any other budgetary issues that either they as a committee identify or that the board identifies to ask them to look at. CBRC also monitors and advises the Board on the allocation and expenditure of our local option levy. And is Rita coming up too?
She just stepped down.
Oh, she just left, of course.
She said to me, if they finish just as I had.
Which is exactly what we did.
So it's going to take a while. So she wanted to ask for indulgence, but she will be back very shortly.
And actually, I would specifically like to recognize Tom and Rita for their length of service on this committee because it's part of what has made it. You've been the continuity, so thank you. Over to you, Tom.
You can give us a break for a minute, actually. We could be there and wait for Rita to come back since she's been waiting this long.
Do you guys want to take a quick break?
Stand up.
We'll take a two-minute recess and then come back. No, just stand up here for a minute and then come back. Thank you, Tom. Go ahead. And Rita.
For the record, my name is Tom Fuller. I'm the co-chair of the Community Budget Review Committee. We are here to present two documents tonight. The first is a summary of the superintendent's proposed 2016-17 budget. You have before you the report. Given the hour and amount of testimony that you've heard this evening, I'd like to just summarize a couple of issues that we feel strongly about. One of them is that the CBRC has recommended that PPS work toward greater transparency in the budget process by developing a friendlier budget document available to the general public. And we'd like to compliment the district for in 2015-17 putting together a summary budget that we think is very useful to the community and we look forward to that being refined as we go forward. We also are particularly pleased to note that the Board adopted budget principles that were developed by this committee based on the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, recommendations which we think will help drive the budget process in the future. There is a tendency, we find, to induct short-term emotion into decisions that have long-term consequences. And that leads me to the first issue that I want to talk to you about tonight that I know is controversial. And that is that the Board adopted a policy to maintain a minimum 3% of annual expenditures as a reserve policy. Based on Amendment Number One to the budget that was adopted for the 2015-17 budget, unassigned contingency currently stands at only 2.3%. The total expenditures for the proposed 2016-17 budget includes a modest increase to 2.475%. The Board is not within its policy guidelines currently. Furthermore, the CBRC finds that the operating contingency, the general fund of 3%, does not comply with recommended practices established by the GFOA. And we are recommending that contingency be increased by June 30, 2019 to 5% and by June 30, 2024 to 10%. The level, that's a level recommended by the GFOA. What we are doing by recommending that amount, and I know that I'm seeing look of skepticism bordering on disregard, is that as the inevitable swings in the state budget, the curve, and the commitments that we've made to our students and community clash, we need some protection. As we also go forward, we would like to express our approval of the district's work to reduce exclusionary discipline, meaning part of its goal to reduce overall exclusionary discipline by 50% one year early. However, the lack of movement in reducing disproportionate discipline rates for students of color compared to their white peers remains an area of concern. The CBRC further recommends that the district includes special education and English language learner populations in its disproportionate discipline reporting, preferably stratified by race and ethnicity. Enrollment balancing is another area that we looked at, and the district undertook a major multi-phase effort to balance enrollment and shift away from the K-8 model to achieve equity and programming for the middle grade district students throughout the district. You proposed in the budget allocating $1.8 million to fund the cost of implementing activities, including hiring two principals in advance of opening middle schools at Tubman and Roseway Heights, adjusting bus routes, providing custodians and facility improvements. And we strongly support this and compliment you for doing so. We also are pleased to see that the proposed budget includes increased funding to allow for scheduling parity and access to compacted math for middle grade students in K-8 schools. However, there remains a significant gap in offerings available to these students, most acutely in the under-enrolled K-8s. We encourage the district to consider adding sufficient FTE in subsequent years to increase curricular offerings, particularly electives to under-enrolled K-8s pending the opening of new middle schools. We also want to point out that there have been considerable new investments made over the last three years that should be monitored and evaluated for effectiveness. Outcomes measured such as third grade reading scores, graduation rates, and discipline rates should be accompanied by meaningful and actionable interim measures that can identify promising and disappointing practices and evaluate progress toward the district goals. We recommend the development of quantitative and qualitative indicators to allow timely assessment of how and such investments and equity allocations in counselors, kindergarten, staffing, and library media specialists are being used, how consistently they're being implemented, and how they are benefiting students. The CBRC acknowledges the positive impact, the continuation of the 2015-16 investments in the 2016-17 budget. We also recognize the continuing benefit of the local option levy and the improving economy. We commend the Board for adopting budget principles that focus on the core program, the long-term perspective, and a consistent evaluation when approaching the budget process. We appreciate the work of PPS to maintain significant investments that are strengthening our schools in line with adopted principles. However, the long-term sustainability of these investments requires the Board to build a healthy reserve at the same time it funds new investments. The Board must commit to educational careers for all of our students, not just their experience next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rita Moore. I'm co-chair of the CBRC, and I'm here to deliver the report on the local levy, the local option levy. In the interest of time, I'll cut to the chase. The CBRC has been appointed by the Board to be the citizen oversight body to look at how the levy is spent. And we can, we can say to the public that we believe all of the funds have been spent by the district in accordance with the promises made during the levy campaign. Levy funds are now placed in a sub-account within the general fund and can only be used to pay teachers' salaries and benefits. As of April 26, PPS has received over $73 million in local option levy funds, which supports approximately 757 teaching positions for this year. That's the essence. We're getting a lot of money. We thank the voters of mobile account of the PPS district, and we're supporting teaching.
Thank you.
I would also like to just take this opportunity to recognize the support that Superintendent Smith provides to the committee and particularly David Wyden and Sarah Bottomley, whose staff support is invaluable. We have four members of our committee here sitting behind us. Roger Kersher, Christina Cowgill, Carmine Quirrs, and Bessie Salter. Do you want to stand up and represent?
I'll be there.
Do you have any questions?
I just wanted to let you know, relative to two things in your report, we did have some discussion this morning in our work session about what it would take at this point to get us to 3% reserves, and the figure was $3 million additional dollars. And that, also regarding evaluation, we've had a little bit of discussion and a staff, written staff response about the capacity of the Systems Planning and Performance Office and whether or not their capacity is a barrier to getting the type of evaluation exactly that you're recommending in here. So those are both ongoing discussions.
This is something that we've talked with you about before, and as we move forward, again, our goal is to ask you to, as we make investments, to take a look at the return of those investments quantitatively.
Absolutely. And qualitatively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work. Really appreciate it.
All right. Before we adjourn the budget committee, Julie, did you want to?
I would. Thank you. This doesn't have anything to do with the budget committee, but it was just, we've had meetings from early this morning on the workings of the Board, and so I have a few things to say. And so I am saying this as the first Latina on the PPS school board, and I'm really sorry that I have to address these issues that I do tonight. But I want to make a public statement that I will no longer tolerate being personally and professionally attacked when my opinion differs from those of some of my colleagues. And unfortunately, this pattern of behavior has been allowed to continue unabated since I have taken seat as a board member. So therefore, this behavior has led to my marginalization, the silencing of my voice, ideas, and my ability to represent my constituencies, given that I don't feel like I have a safe space in which to share my views. I'm tired of having to stand up not only for myself but for the communities I serve and in particular, the marginalized students that I have made promises to, to make a difference here. So I feel that the Board has been complicit in different ways in allowing this behavior to continue and that this behavior sends a disturbing message to all of our audiences. And that if the leadership of the Board treats brown people and a brown woman with an education, then what chance does it have to communicate to students of color that they are valued in going through our system and that we want them to succeed? So this behavior cuts off my ability to express the views of those children and the cultures and the experiences in which I know. And not one of you can question my experiences as a woman of color and my marginalization and the discrimination that I have faced my whole life. So don't even try to say that you, you can walk in my shoes. This is bigger than me. This is not about me. But this is, if this comportment is being, is going to be allowed to continue in our shared space, then that devalues all of our students, really. Even if we assume that this behavior has nothing to do with race and ethnicity, ethnicity, can't even talk, or the fact that I'm a woman and a Latina, we still have to ask why this behavior has been allowed to continue on a professional board, in a professional organization, and in particular, in an educational organization where we need to model behavior for our students. So in order to move forward, I'm, you know, wanting to move forward, but I have to have assurances that this, that there will be room for safe dialogue and for multiple and diverse viewpoints, which myself and many of our students and communities have. Because if we can't allow and guarantee the safety of that sacred space, then we all lose, and our kids ultimately are going to lose. So I implore us that we start making some significant changes now, because I don't see how we are going to work to further the equity work that has begun so beautifully in this district. That's it. You're here.
Okay. Thank you, Julie. And I, yeah, I would just like to say that, you know, people ask me about the school board, and I say it is two things. Actually, one is the hardest thing that I think most people on the board have ever done, and second, that it's ground zero for democracy. And
Well, it should be.
And it, and it should be. And that, you know, where a single voice can make a difference and where the collective wisdom of the majority can move mountains. And the key to it is, as you said, is respect of each other's intentions, knowing that, you know, assuming that everybody's intentions are good as a starting spot, and secondly, thoughtful listening and respect and safe dialogue, because without that, we can't get to the collective wisdom of the majority. And certainly, this board has not been perfect at all, and a lot of room for improvement. And I think we're all committed to doing that, to lead by example and to make this district, to give the, give our best shot at making this district the best it can be. So I really appreciate you bringing this up.
Thank you.
And Julie, I want to thank you too, because one of the guiding principles of our equity work is speaking our individual truth. And it is hard to do, and I appreciate that you were courageous enough to do it. And I was also insulted and disregarded in our conversations this morning, and it's not okay.
And Pam, that's, has felt like too. And so we all need to be able to, as you say, state our truths in safety.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so, thank you. We're going to recess as a budget committee and commence our school board meeting with a climate change literacy resolution, which the Board has heard testimony about. So Carol, would you like to?
I would, and I will also appreciate another group in the audience and actually give you guys the opportunity to stand if you want to all stand and just show us, because I'm going to read a few of the details about your resolution. But go ahead and stand and just show us how many people are here supporting this resolution. Yay. So this resolution came to us from 350 PDFs who along with a number of endorsing organizations have, have done some terrific advocacy on behalf of having PPS take a look at and then pass this resolution to make sure that our, our students are climate literate. Through this resolution, the staff will be developing an implementation plan, and I want to just pull out a few quotes from the resolution that was drafted that then went to the Teaching and Learning Committee and was passed by a vote of three to zero to send it on to the Board. So quoting from the resolution, "It is essential that in their classes and other school activities, students probe the causes and consequences of the climate crisis as well as possible solutions in developmentally appropriate ways and from pre-K through 12th grade become climate literate. All Portland Public Schools students should develop confidence and passion when it comes to making a positive difference in society and come to see themselves as activists and leaders for social and environmental justice, especially through seeing the diversity of people around the world who are fighting the root causes of climate change. And it is vital that students reflect on local impacts of the climate crisis and recognize how their own communities and lives are impacted. Portland Public Schools recognize that our schools must play a leadership role in modeling for students climate and environmentally friendly practices when it comes to building design, energy use, land use, waste disposal, composting, and recycling." The resolution states, "Number one, the Board of Education would like to thank the organizations and community partners that endorsed the resolution that was presented to the Teaching and Learning Committee and for your activism on climate literacy. Two, guided by the above recitals, the Board of Education directs the superintendent in collaboration with PPS students, teachers, and community members to develop an implementation plan so that there is curriculum and educational opportunity that addresses climate change and climate justice in all Portland Public Schools. And number three, the implementation plan should include a review of current textbooks for accuracy around the severity of the climate crisis and the impact of human activities. PPS will abandon the use of any adopted text material that is found to express doubt about the severity of the climate crisis or its root in human activities." I also just want to call out Director Rosen for his work on bringing this forward, and this is also a great passion of hers.
All right. The Board will now consider Resolution 5272, resolution to develop an implementation plan for climate literacy. Do I have a motion? Director Rosen moves. And Director Anthony seconds to adopt 5272. Ms. Susan, is there any public comment?
Yes, we have six. Gabby Lemieux and Cheryl Lorman.
Thank you.
Dear school board members, thank you for this long evening. My name is Cheryl Lorman, and I have been a part of the core group to develop and implement this resolution, and I direct the nonprofit called Create Plenty. I also have a four-year-old son, Leo. As part of my work for the past few years, I have been connecting with PPS high school students to help create a community between and around them for environmental learning and experiences. The topic of climate change and the no of fossil fuels and the yes of the many solutions is too important to leave to chance, and that is what is happening. And why am I, why am I here today? Aside from the fact that there's strawberries that are ripe in my garden in May, and they're June berries, the first reason, I think, is that I have parents who opted to vacation by exploring natural areas. They also planted a garden every year. I needed to pull a lot of weeds. Hated that. The second reason is I happened to write a research paper in English class about greenhouse gas pollution. But then, it was about 10 years before I happened to notice a book about garbage called Garbage Land. That, long story short, led me here. It took me 12 years into adulthood, after both high school and college, before I realized that I felt I had discovered something that felt relevant. So much of my journey to this point has been left to chance, and this is a continuing pattern today with youth in Portland. We can't leave climate education and justice to chance. It must be intentional. We, the community, must collaborate with you, the school district, as our resolution implies. This will involve all voices, invigorate the talents and capacity inherent in our great city. So just imagine high school mentors like those in outdoor school, working with K-8 student gardens to be productive and benefit the community year-round. Imagine school grounds better managed in an environmentally sustainable manner with climate change threats guiding new policies and serving it as an outdoor classroom and as a model for the state and the nation. Imagine the year of the climate where teachers come together to seek best practices for teaching about climate change and its social implications. And imagine students earning class credit for learning the technical leadership and community-building skills that they will need for the future challenges we are now facing. We can help create a world, no matter what field of study is chosen, to take care of the earth and keep it livable. Because, and to see it as, as not someone else's problem, but everybody's challenge. So we look forward to working with you very soon. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you very much for your time tonight. I'm a PPS student, and I'm here with the Climate Justice Group. This past weekend, I was lucky enough to be in Anacortes, Washington, with several hundred activists, young people, grandparents, and community members for mass actions called Break Free. Three days of demonstrations and civil disobedience designed to call attention to the just transition away from fossil fuels to renewable resources. Several put their bodies on the line by risking arrest through protests and even a blockade of the railroad tracks leading to two major oil refineries. I'm 17 years old. While I was there, I was asked several times why I felt at my age it was necessary to risk my own arrest by standing with other activists. People said to me, you have your whole lifetime ahead of you to get arrested and to do this kind of work. My response is, we don't have my lifetime to wait. We don't even have the couple of years it will be before I'm truly an adult. My action starts now, or it works never. Your action, this action, accepting this resolution, and taking on the responsibility as educators to create an effective, engaging, and comprehensive climate curriculum, that starts now. That must start now. I'm the leader of a club called Environmental Service Projects. Some days I stand before my peers and I look at their faces as they stare blankly back at me, and I know it's not because they don't care or because they don't believe in the reality of our environmental crisis. Their curriculum simply has not and does not reflect the kind of care or concern necessary to inspire them to take action. Or to understand this is not just a planetary emergency, but our global, our global culture's best opportunity to build a better future. Your job as decision-makers for thousands of PPS students is to make climate literacy a priority. It is unacceptable that we have textbooks in our schools that spread doubt about the human causes and urgency of the crisis. A student's lack of understanding about climate change is a compromise for their future. Climate education is not a niche or a specialization. It is the minimum requirement for my generation to be successful in our changing world. And this resolution is PPS's chance to heed the call of their professional and moral responsibility. My name is Gabrielle Lemieux. I'm a Lincoln High School student, and I'm one of many ready and waiting to learn where I fit into a just and sustainable future.
Next, we have Harriet Cook and Jan Zuckerman.
That was great testimony. Let me just say, we were all up here going, wow, that was really great. So just know that that's what's going on up here.
Can that count for her final grade?
I know. That was really, it was really awesome.
I want to be on the record that that's an A+.
Thank you. Next, we have Harriet Cook and Jan Zuckerman.
That was great testimony. Let me just say, we were all up here going, "Wow, that was really great." So just know that that's what's going on up here.
Can that count for her final grade?
I know, that was really, it was really awesome.
I want to be on the record that that's an A+.
Thank you. What American day you have been, and this is, I'm sure, just one day of the life of the school board, so I just want to acknowledge that.
It keeps going on, though.
Yeah, yeah. My name is Harriet Cook, I'm the mother of two children who both graduated from Wilson High School and Robert Gray Middle School, where I had the privilege of volunteering in many capacities, including starting a multicultural celebration that continues to this day. I have a master's degree in public health, and I retired as a physician to work on the most dire public health issues of our times, ecological sustainability, and the economic system that has driven us to where we are and keeps us from moving into a more sustainable, just, and healthy way of life. Our resolution is an opportunity to guide education in a direction that is much broader than climate change, but includes climate change. Because to teach about climate change and injustice and the solutions is to teach how everything is connected and interdependent with everything else, how our social and economic systems are intimately connected to our ecology, and how they have led us to this critical place. Global warming is just one of many environmental crises we're up against, and the crisis of climate is also the crisis of economic justice. Ecologists talk about planetary boundaries and how when we surpass them, we threaten the capacity of life on Earth and the health of all living things. We've surpassed three of these boundaries: climate change, biodiversity loss, and the nitrogen cycle, and we need to reverse our atmospheric carbon and other surpassed boundaries quickly, and we can. There are models out there, there are books, there are educators. To successfully overcome these tipping points and create an economy of restoration is going to require a re-education of all of us, which starts in our schools. Because when we teach our children, we teach our families, and when we teach our families, we teach our communities, and when we teach our communities, we teach our nation. We need to teach about how the way we've been ordering human endeavors and activities has been pushing us over the edge of sustainability. We need to teach about permaculture, agroecology, economics, and new economic systems that can help us develop the sustainable and regenerative world ecology that is possible. And we need to teach these things with optimism and sensitivity and quickly. We need to abandon the erroneous educational materials so that we can have space to bring alternative and ever-evolving materials into our schools. We can't wait for the ideal budget. We've sat here and heard the board's fiscal concerns, but there are inspiring curriculum materials and documentaries available, and more coming online all the time, and there are volunteers and foundations who are willing to help bridge the financial concerns that feel like you don't have the capacity to follow through with us. But we can't allow fiscal concerns to drive our education system any more than we let them limit our response to climate change and social injustice. This is an opportunity to create a resolution that, as Naomi Klein's recent title suggests, changes everything, because everything's at stake, and everything is connected, and we don't have time to wait for a better time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jan Zuckerman, and I was one of, I'm the co-founders of the Environmental Middle School, which is now Sunnyside Environmental School. And I had a whole testimony to share with you, but I'm not going to, because I think you've heard from, I think Gabby's and other folks have said it, and you understand it. But I think the one thing I want to say is that students can hear the truth, much better than many of us adults can, and they want to hear it. And it's our, this is an opportunity to allow them to get the truth and then be empowered by that truth to come up with creative ideas, to make the changes that need to happen. So, this is, this resolution is the step towards that, and I want to thank you so much for it. And I also brought you some beautiful, I saw these flowers, they look like the coral reef, which is seriously in danger, you know, right now, and so I'm hoping that this resolution will help heal that and heal the spirits of many, many of us and all of us in the world, you know, what needs to happen in the world, and it starts right here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kyle Smith-Doolittle and Bill Bigelow.
As the flowers are getting passed out, I'll get started. Dear esteemed School Board Members, thank you for your dedicated service to our student and school district. My name is Shannon Shilling, and I am a parent, as well as a high school physics teacher in the Portland region. I've been doing this for 17 years, and this is the first time I've come before a board. As School Board Members, you have the power and the responsibility to be the compass for our children's future, and for this reason, I testify tonight to encourage you to support this climate literacy resolution that has been proposed to you. We are at a hinge point in history here, in which we educators and parents must choose to prepare our children for a sustainable future, rather than ignore the facts of our changing climate, as we have for the last three decades. And there's a sense of urgency here, to educate our children on the reality of climate change, as echoed by the world leaders of 195 countries in Paris five months ago, by Pope Francis and his encyclical last year, by President Obama and his commitments to the transition to renewable energy, and right here at home, by Portland's mayor and city commissioners, in their adoption of recent resolutions to move past our historical paradigm of fossil fuel business as usual. The curriculum and efforts set forth in this resolution are not futuristic, rather, our future depends on them. We must empower and enable our next generation with the knowledge and skills they need to be a part of the solution, rather than part of the problem. I want my children and their children to look back in the textbooks and say, "Our parents' generation, they really fought for us. They had the courage to do the right thing." And there's good news, we as a school district are not alone in our efforts. The International Baccalaureate Program has recognized the importance of climate change curriculum since 2009. They've required it in their IB physics syllabus worldwide, and Next Generation Science Standards Framework, used by school districts across the country, they embed climate literacy in all four of their educational strands. Yet our schools and teachers do not have a curriculum that's district-wide mandated to teach this essential curriculum. But there's more good news, Oregon is a local control state, and our local school board, that's us and you, have a lot of autonomy to choose its curriculum. We already have teachers, parents, and leaders willing and able to lead this charge. This movement for climate literacy needs to come from all sides, from the top down, as well as the bottom up. Thank you for leading from the top by providing your visionary support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bill Bigelow, I taught high school social studies in Portland for about 30 years, and am now the curriculum editor for Rethinking Schools magazine. Thanks for taking up the issue of climate justice. As Superintendent Smith noted, the resolution before you concludes, and I quote, "Portland Public Schools will abandon the use of any adopted text material that is found to express doubt about the severity of the climate crisis or its root in human activities." This is not hypothetical. Let me just give two examples. A science text used in district schools is called Physical Science: Concepts in Action. It's published by Pearson. Its few paragraphs on climate change are littered with doubt. The section begins, "Human activities may also change the climate over time." "May?" The text is thick with this skeptical language of might and could and may. "Physical science actually tells students," and I quote, "carbon dioxide emissions from motor vehicles, power plants, and other sources may contribute to global warming." This is a section that could have been written by the Exxon Public Relations Department, and it's being used in Portland schools. The Holt McDougal book, Modern World History, is the adopted text for a modern world history course taken by almost all high school students in Portland. It includes three paragraphs on climate change. The second paragraph begins, "Not all scientists agree with the theory of the greenhouse effect." The book admits that the climate is slowly warming, but Modern World History tells students that, quote, "To combat this problem, the industrialized nations have called for limits on the release of greenhouse gases. In the past, developed nations were the worst polluters." The book turns poor countries, then, into eco-villains. It says, "So far, developing countries have resisted strict limits." We wouldn't teach our students that Denver is the capital of Mexico, we wouldn't teach them that a spider is a type of mammal, and we should not teach our students to be skeptical of the human roots of the climate crisis. We are not urging that you go out and buy new textbooks. We don't know of any textbook that does an adequate job teaching about the climate crisis, or the many ways we can make a difference. What we need is a response from the school district that matches the urgency of this crisis. In our resolution, we urge the district to support professional development, curriculum materials, and outdoor and field studies that explore the causes and consequences of the climate crisis, as well as potential solutions. These will not come from big education corporations, they will come from the collaboration of administrators, teachers, students, and community members. More than 30 organizations endorse our resolution. This is an opportunity to begin to build an educational partnership for climate justice. Thank you.
All right, any board discussion before we vote?
No further discussion.
Just make it now.
I just wanted, I think they got the blazer shirt left, so I wanted to acknowledge him wearing a blazer shirt. So, you guys have all done a great job of explaining why this is so important, so I just wanted, before we vote, to thank you all for working so hard on this, because it's been a long effort for all of you, and you all stuck it out tonight. And what I see are students, teachers, parents, retirees, grandparents, and from all walks of life and cultures, and it really has been inspiring to be part of this, and there's a long journey ahead that hopefully will also, I'm sure, will be inspiring. I wanted to just finally particularly acknowledge 350 PDX. And I've said this before, in only a couple of years, you've impacted every level of government locally and nationally to move the needle in the right direction on climate change. And as a close friend of mine says, "To make needed change, you need endless pressure, endlessly applied," and that's what 350 PDX is doing, so thank you all.
And I would echo those thanks. The only thing I would add is, this is an example of relevant curriculum to everybody, so it is, it's the kind of thing in addition to culturally relevant curriculum, and that we need to be doing more of. So, I'm very excited to vote on this. With that, we'll vote on Resolution 5272. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, indicate by saying no. No abstentions. Resolution 5272 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Voting yes, okay. Thank you. The board will now consider the remainder of its business agenda, having already voted on Resolution 5272. I'd like to call out Resolution 5266 in the business agenda, which corrects some Scribner errors and verbiage in the previously adopted resolution, attendant serious changes for Lincoln and Wilson clusters. Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from this, for separate discussion? Okay. Ms. Susan, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion and a second to adjourn the business agenda?
I'll move.
Second. Okay, moved by Director Constan, seconded by Director Anthony. Ms. Susan, any public comment?
No.
The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? No? Are there any abstentions? The business agenda, one abstention. The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero, with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Voting yes. All right. We will now adjourn our business meeting.